So we can jump right in. Does this agenda work for everybody? Okay.
Hey, thank you so much. We are very happy to be here and to represent the city. My name is Ed Bowditch. Just a brief background, I've worked at the Capitol since nineteen eighty seven. Worked for ten years on the nonpartisan staff, most of the time on the nonpartisan budget committee staff. I worked for Colorado State University as their chief financial officer and secretary to the board, where I had to deal with all the open meetings and open records laws. And then I've been a lobbyist for fifteen years now. Most of my clients are public sector school districts like Jeffco, other local governments as well. But very happy to be here.
Yes, thank you, Ed. So I'm Jennifer Castle, the other part of the lobbying team. And I've been at the Capitol since two thousand and eight. I first started as a legislative aide for a state representative who was representing Summit County at the time. And worked with her for a couple of years and was her campaign manager. And then she went to Governor Hicken Looper's office and I joined her there as part of the legislative policy staff. I then went over to the governor's office of economic development and international trade to be his legislative liaison for a few years. And then I was, had the opportunity to go to the private sector and join Ed and our former partner and to do private contract lobbying and have been doing that ever since. So and as I mentioned, we do represent a lot of local governmental entities that are thrilled to be a part of the city of Arvada. To do a little bit of a legislative overview, we wanted to give you, I guess, kind of set the stage, if you will, of what we're going to expect in the twenty twenty three session. And you all probably are aware of the election results. And how we did see a blue wave in the state of Colorado. So Democratic majorities will remain at the Capitol. Governor Polis won his reelection, so the governor's office is held by a Democrat. And then in the legislature, we have, the Democrats hold the Senate twenty-three to twelve. And they also hold the House forty-six to nineteen. In the House, the Democrats do hold a super majority, which is a veto-proof majority. Should any veto be necessary, but and I believe, looking back in history, this is the first time that either party has had such a strong majority down at the Capitol. So it will be interesting to see how the Democrats manage this, right? And we do also have thirty-two new members of the legislature, two in the Senate, thirty over in the House. And the Senate, a lot of the new folks that are in the Senate came from the House. So there's going to be a lot of institutional knowledge that the Senate has. And the House with the thirty new members, that's almost half of the chamber. So certainly can be a challenge, but we see it, of course, as a, as an opportunity really to engage with those legislators, develop good working relationships with them. And so we are looking forward to that. Some expected themes that we think we're going to see down at the Capitol, and we're gonna talk about some upcoming legislation, so not to, I won't get into detail on any of these. But we do expect to see some issues around local control, gun, gun safety and prevention, affordable housing, perhaps some transportation issues, fiscal policy will also be a big topic down at the Capitol as well.
And with fiscal policy, I'm always designated out of the two of us to watch all those issues. General fund revenues are slowing down, and yet the Tabor refunds remain high. It's kind of the perfect storm, if you will. This year, our current Tabor refund is three point six billion. So those seven hundred and fifty dollar checks that everyone got right before Election Day. Anyway, that was just a portion of your Tabor refund. So this year, three point six billion, that's twenty percent of the general fund revenues. We turn around and give back to the taxpayers. Great time to be a taxpayer. I don't want to minimize that. Two propositions will impact the state general fund at some point, our income tax reduction. And then the Prop one, two, three, the housing measure, that will shift some general fund over to the housing. Those won't impact the state budget now, so long as we have those taper refunds. But once our economics change and the indicators change, and we don't have refunds, they will impact the state general fund. Couple of other issues, just briefly, Jennifer's gonna talk about land use.
Yes, so land use, we think, is going to be a big topic down at the Capitol. Whether it's telling local governments what to do with land use or, or other initiatives. Some of you may have heard that the governor is proposing a big land use bill that could, in fact, usurp local control as it relates to zoning requirements. In particular, perhaps limiting single-family zoning and in favor of more multifamily zoning. And there could be zoning around ADUs, less parking restrictions that come along with new development, those kind of things. Still, I think a lot to come in this area. I know there's a lot of stakeholders that have been involved in these conversations. But interestingly enough, local governments really haven't been a part of that conversation. So I think we're gonna see a lot more details be, be flushed out as, as things, you know, kind of come to fruition. But we are hearing that this is going to be one of the governor's priorities. And really, his purpose behind this is to try to get a little bit more control, if you will, around affordable housing. I think he just perhaps feels that not enough has been done in the affordable housing arena to, to be able to allow, you know, more citizens' access to housing around the state. And also, there's an interesting proposal that's coming forward on first right of refusal that would give local governments and nonprofits a right to purchase buildings, whether it's, you know, a warehouse or apartment building or something, anything that can be turned into affordable housing. So that could be an interesting initiatives and an opportunity for local governments.
Who's, who's leading that effort? Like, who's driving that initiative?
You know, it, it could just very well be a single legislator from northern Colorado. I'm not sure if any interest group is actually behind it. But it's kind of an extension on some legislation we saw in the past couple of years around mobile homes. And giving mobile home, mobile homeowners for right of refusal to buy, or I'm sorry, mobile home renters. First right of refusal to buy, thanks their home. And then lastly, we are hearing rumors that right to rest or the homeless bill of rights could, in fact, come back this coming session. Which, of course, could limit local government and their regulation just in, in public areas. And what they, what they
Is ACLU pushing that, or who's saying?
Perhaps, you know, there was a, a group, I guess it didn't come the past two sessions, or maybe at least last year.
Been a couple of years.
It's been a couple of years, but yes, usually the ACLU has an interest in that, and some just individual legislators as well. The Coalition for Colorado Coalition for the Homeless, yeah.
More ACLU than anybody else, I think.
So, yeah, so we might see that coming back as well, too.
There will be a bill that will modify Cora, the Open Records Act, to give the press a waiver on any fees that they might have to pay for Cora records. Or for records requested through Cora. There are some concerns about that. How do you define who the press is in this day and age? And would this result in a massive number of increase?
I would have a significant concern with bloggers of any fringe ideology, ideological, having that kind of power. Because it can put a lot of burden on our team to pull those records.
Yeah, so.
Yet another unfunded mandate.
Yeah, so I think, I think, I think a lot of public entities have expressed exactly that concern. So we'll see on that one. This would exclude the Colorado Criminal Justice Records Act, but I'm still, we'll have to watch that one. There'll be issues on law enforcement, potentially on no-knock warrants, auto theft, gun violence prevention, and red light cameras. Finally, the one issue that seems to be bubbling up to the top, not to the top, but an issue that will need to be addressed. Two years ago, there was a bill passed on website accessibility, which I think everybody understands why that is such a good thing. However, this bill may need to be modified just on exactly what needs to be accessible on a website. If you use a third-party application, is the local government or the entity or the state that's sponsoring the website liable if that is not accessible? So that will probably need to be further defined this year, but we're expecting to see that.
And just related to that, we have put work and time into that, so we're well aware and very concerned.
Yeah.
Certainly, we're gonna see a lot more issues pop up at the Capitol. I think we already know that issues around construction defects, sustainability and environmental policies, and affordable housing are still gonna come. You know, it seems that local government issues are, can be a hot topic down at the Capitol. They have been in the past, and I think they're still going to be. But, you know, every legislator, there's a hundred legislators, they each get to introduce five bills. Somehow, we end up with seven hundred plus down at the Capitol, so. And so we'll just, we will have to see on some of these issues, but it's gonna be very interesting to see how the legislature interacts, how the newbies interact with some of the old timers down at the Capitol, and a lot of, you know, different dynamics are gonna happen.
On that encouraging note.
So how are you planning on lobbying at the Capitol versus working with this legislative agenda? I mean, I think, I don't, I don't know, I've never worked with a city lobbyist, so I'm not sure what that looks like on, on your end.
Thank you. That's an excellent question, probably something we should have started with. But, so we stay in close touch with the four lobbyists from the Colorado Municipal League, as well as the lobbyists from Colorado counties, the Special District Association on those issues, like Cora, that affect all public entities. Just to, just to stay in touch with them about what they're hearing, what they're thinking. Try and touch base with the governor's office as well. We've already let the three legislators from this area know that we will be representing the city. I think we have a date set for a legislative breakfast with them. And again, just, the ideal thing is for them to come to us and say, I'm hearing about this, somebody wants me to vote this way. Does the city have any concerns? It doesn't always work that easily. Sometimes a bill is introduced from your own delegation, and you have to scratch your head and say, gosh, we get to go back to the first and say, we're not a big fan of your bill. And that can happen, too. But the best thing to do is get a relationship to where they are coming with you, and we're checking.
Thank you. Just on the legislative breakfast is on January twelfth, and it's on your calendar. So it will be great. I'm just, quick story, we were meeting with Lakewood on something else, and they had planned a big breakfast, and they had all their team there, and it was seven-thirty in the morning and six, that RSVP'd. One showed up and the other showed up half an hour late. So if we're able to get three, that will be good. And we've struggled with this in the past.
Yes, past history, we've had real struggles, because they get real busy, real quick. Yeah, and we have discovered breakfast works better than later in the day.
And we do have a fourth now, Cinderella Cutter is representing the western part of Arvada.
That's true, we do.
Make sure you're including her, too, I think.
We will loop her in as well.
Yeah, yeah, because I think it's all of Candela's and Leyden and probably Whisper Creek area, too. So it's fairly significant chunk. What is, what is the timeline look of when you hear a bill coming in that impacts the city? That we have any time to kind of react or give formal thoughts back to you?
It depends, and, and I'm sorry, I can't be more specific than that, but sometimes we have a few weeks when we hear of a bill that's coming that we either, you know, talk to the city, that the city will be positive or negative about, and that we have time to really either suggest amendments, get a, you know, feedback and whatnot, or sometimes it's a matter of hours. And usually, you have more time at the beginning of the session. As, as, as bills are introduced and they're not in committee that week, and there's a little more time to, to work with things.
And will you coordinate with us? You know, in the past, I've been called on to go down and testify. I'm sure others have as well. You'll you'll let us know when you need us to.
Absolutely. I have met you down there in the
Obviously, Metro Mayor, particularly on construction defects, and transportation have been two of our big ones.
Yeah.
We have a weekly meeting with, with city leadership. And we'll be attending every week, and then if things arise, you know, between that timeframe, certainly communicate sooner or make sure that city leadership is aware of what is to come, perhaps tomorrow. Because sometimes, yeah, committee hearings are announced fairly quickly.
And, and sometimes your city staff will hear about things before we will. So we like the, the two-way communications, and we can chase things down as well. And you guys will hear things, obviously, as, as local elected officials.
So how do we best funnel that up to you when we hear things?
Probably through Lori.
And, you know, we're gonna adjust as we go through this, because we're gonna find things that work better. We, most of our subject matter experts have professional associations that maybe they will hear things and can contribute to this. So like they were saying, we're meeting every Wednesday from twelve to one, so that we can stay in touch. We're creating an email group for this group. It may be a bit overwhelming at, at first, but just so we can keep track and keep pace, because we haven't done this before. But if we find we're not catching up with you quickly enough, or you're hearing things, we're gonna adjust. But I, I don't have to say this, don't be shy. If you have things, we'll get it, we'll get it to them.
Well, Randy and John are both on the policy committee at CML, so they'll be able to, how often do you guys meet down there?
Policy committee for CML meets three or four times total.
Throughout the year.
In total throughout the year, we've met twice. So we generally have one in February and then potentially one after that, depending.
And then John's on the board, so.
Yeah, and, and we appreciate the ability to work with CML, and their new lobbyist used to be our intern, so we know her well.
And that bomber guy down there, he's a pain in the tuchus.
Just if you don't know the relationship, the relationship.
Oh.
Let's get that out there right now.
Any other spouses we should? I, I would say, thinking about the legislative session, seven hundred bills, I wouldn't recommend, there's no specific number that I recommend you engage in, but I wouldn't think that you'd want to engage in sixty or seventy bills this year. I really like to focus and say, what are the ten, fifteen most important bills that really impact the city?
What do we fall on our sword of?
Right, now, now, I don't want to come up with a number, because if there's more that are really important, that's okay. But I have had clients that really want to get involved in every license plate bill down there, and you just kind of, you lose your effectiveness, I think.
And, and do you guys know, are there any bills that are gonna be introduced down there that are potentially positive for cities or potentially all negative? I mean, because my read on it so far, I've heard nothing positive, only, only negative, that will be just opposing things. A judge may have a different.
You've got one bill for municipal courts on data sharing between state municipal courts. And they're not moving as fast forward as we like, but there, I think, but they're ultimately doing, stakeholder group to study the issue. That's a massive step forward and something that we've really wanted for a long time. That's
Okay, so potentially.
So anything we can encourage, so that we're not always there saying we hate it, that's a good image, too.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
But you, you're probably aware of CML's initiated legislation around magic mushrooms. Right, trying to get local control with that, but last year, we did see a lot of grant programs for local governments. Whether we're gonna, I don't think we're gonna see that.
Yeah.
This coming year, just because of the budget constraints.
I don't know, the first right of refusal could be a good thing.
Property owner.
It gives us, and it gives us an option that we don't have to take if we don't want to.
Yeah.
How do, how do our commercial property owners in, in Arvada sell a right of first refusal if the city already owns it?
Well, we say we don't want it, so there you go, you can do it to another.
No, you're not understanding the question.
I understand the question, Joe. I'm trying to be optimistic.
John's the poke the guy of the team here.
Yeah. John's the occasionally we throw pens at.
Okay, what else we got?
We have to go through all this.
They're the highly functioning city council.
In spite of what you might
Based upon my conversation with other mayors, I've got it very easy.
You know, I would ask if there's anything else about the legislative session that we should know about how things work, kind of cautionary tales or anything related to our group. I will say that last year, at the end of the session, and this is a nude, but we were really, I don't wanna say flat-footed, but it was going so quickly with the things that were coming up and in our ability to review the bills and understand. Is there anything else that you'd like to share with us that, maybe first time with lobbyists that we should be aware of?
I, in thinking about this year, there's not a lot of new money. So legislators aren't gonna be able to establish their bills with a hundred thousand dollars or a grant program, whatnot. It's not an election year, so that might lead some legislators to say, well, if I can't get this bill in whole, I'll do a study session next summer. So, and that's okay, we're always in favor of things getting turned into studies. But I'm, I'm really optimistic from the standpoint, if we can have a normal calendar. Last year was normal, and that helped a lot, but the, the amount of federal funds they had to allocate really, you know, overwhelmed everybody. This year, they'll have a little bit of that, there'll need to be some modifications to some of last year's programs, but it won't be as overwhelming. Now, the Budget Committee chaired by our own, you know, Senator Zenzinger, with five other new members. It's a very good committee, a very functional committee, but it's brand new, with the exception of Senator Zenzinger. So they have a pretty steep learning curve, but they've been getting along well, and that's the most important thing.
In the, sorry, oh, the, the federal money that's coming in now from the infrastructure bill and the Inflation Reduction Act. As I understand, both of those, unlike ARPA, are going through the executive branch, where ARPA, a big portion went to the legislature to be up. Is that, do I have that correct? That it's pretty much the, the pot of money lands in the governor's office?
I can't say for certain, but I think you're right.
Okay.
Yeah. And most of those federal funds are more executive branch allocated. The legislature's not involved in those, but it was unusual for the earlier funds to be, to have a legislative component.
I would also say, just to add on what Ed said, sometimes just understanding that the building, the Capitol, understand the political realities down there. While you think that something is rational, and that it seems obvious that you'd want to, that legislators would want to support something, that isn't always the case, right? You know, just because it makes sense. We have data to back certain things up, and again, that it is rational, doesn't mean that a political party is gonna support it.
Do you ever, do you ever engage in any grassroots communicate, communications or advocacy? Because to your point right there, a lot, a lot of legislators know the score, but they can't support something because of where their base is, and their base is in a certain place because of ideology and not because of facts. Is there ever any sort of, you know, kind of trying to move like where the public base is in order to be able to get the legislators to a point where they need to be in order to be able to vote yes or no, as would the Hest, you know, about us?
Ideally, we'd like to think so. Are we, you, you'd be able to, I mean, hopefully. Right? Because at the end of the day, you don't want an ideology kind of driving some policies, right? Exactly. We do want data and facts backing that up.
Well, that's what I mean, is there a movement to help drive the base? Like, that kind of engagement's beyond just the legislators, right? Yes, it is.
But, but I wouldn't say that, that we've done a lot of that. I've seen that done, especially some private companies will, a bill will be introduced, and suddenly postcards and phone calls go out to certain legislative districts, saying, tell your legislator to vote no on this health plan and things like that. At the local government level, I've seen that. Now, on an individual basis, hey, we need somebody to testify on this issue. That has happened. Not so much on a, on a broader basis.
What about the interlocutors, such as the unions or the commercial developers, et cetera? The people who tend to hold a lot of sway, sway over the respective bases.
Yeah. Yeah, you can see some of that, certainly.
So let's fast forward to the end of the session, please. Here, providing us a recap. What does success look like?
I hope that success looks like, first of all, all of you feel like you are engaged, and you feel like you really understand the major issues that the legislature passed. The worst thing that we could report is, gosh, there was this bill that went through, and we missed it. And it's gonna be devastating to Arvada. That, that is the worst thing that can happen. And you never want that to happen, but that's why, again, staying in touch with all the, our, our other folks, making sure we have our bills that we're tracking, that they're not amended to lateness process and all that. We can easily give you a kind of a scorecard of bills the city is engaged in, the positions and what's happened to those bills. On a one-pager, that's a pretty easy thing to do. There may be other things where somebody has an amendment, and we say, you know what? It's just not good for the city, and the amendment never gets offered, so that doesn't show up on a scorecard, but kind of anecdotal.
And I would say, city leadership, feeling like they're engaged, feeling like you're informed that you're up to date. And our legislative delegation as well, too. I mean, to Ed's point about you never want something to pass, and it's the end of session, you say, oh, shoot, there wasn't impact to the city. So making sure that we stay in constant communication with the legislative delegation, so they know exactly where we stand prior to them taking a position on a bill. And hopefully that they support us on, in that position.
And that the staff feels like we're a good resource. That I'm not gonna know everything about no-knock rates, but I feel like if, if I have some expertise I can reach out to, and that they can reach out to us when they're hearing about things. I think that's, that would be positive.
Are you sensing a more pro-police atmosphere down at Capitol?
A little less anti-police, I wouldn't say pro-police. Yeah. Maybe, maybe people realizing the pendulum needs to swing back a little bit more. Not pro-police, but just, we, we need some right sizing. I mean, look on the, the issue of auto theft. That will be a bill that's introduced with bipartisan support. I, I know there are some members of the legislature who believe that we shouldn't be creating any more felonies, no new felonies. And so that will be an interesting one to see how it gets through and how it's received in the House especially.
Until they're heard and stolen.
No comment.
What is, exactly is the bill? Is it making auto theft a felony, or?
Right now, auto theft is a felony if the value of the vehicle is two thousand dollars and over. So there's, I don't wanna say an incentive, but if you steal an older car, you know.
And you disproportionately harm people, probably needed the most.
That's exactly right. So. And it may have some other components, but that's the key.
And who's carrying that bill?
Haven't seen, haven't heard it, but I hear it's coming.
Because with that one, yeah, the equity angle is probably the loophole to get it through.
Yes.
From the no-new felonies people, well.
Right, so. It's really not a new felony, it's just an adjustment of an existing felony to address the equity issue.
I don't know if this would be a pro-police issue or not, but there's going to be a lot of gun safety measures. It will be introduced, there's going to be a ban, there's going to be an attempt to ban assault rifles or assault weapons and rapid-fire triggers.
And how well do we think those are gonna hold up in court? Haven't those been done in other states? That I don't know. Pretty sure there's something like that happening right now in another state, I can't remember. That I'm not too sure, but I would expect both of those measures to pass the legislature. Okay.
There's one that's currently being litigated, our current assault weapon ban in Colorado, or the high-capacity magazine ban in Colorado is currently being litigated.
Yeah, in Oregon, yeah, didn't they just, so I saw that Oregon passed, like voter referendum passed a pretty sweeping gun, but the high capacity was part of that, but it wasn't the only part of it, it had multiple pieces. So be curious to see how that plays out. And if they strike down all of it, or a little, or whatnot.
And I don't want to jump in front of any questions or in the conversation. We need to bring this to you for approval and adoption, and so I thought we should go through page one. Yeah, that's helpful. And, but I, we do want this to be a reflection of more direction and what you're thinking, and I'm, I'm not sure how much detail you've dug into it. Didn't change a lot from the previous year, but we did do some additions, and we brought in recommendations from the city team. So the one place that I would start would be on page number four.
Before we go into the page, last year, when I was working, reading through all this, I might have redlined a little too aggressively, I You? All right, well, I had just gotten elected, so I was very excited, but one of the feedback I got from council members was that this document no one reads, and it has, doesn't have power. And so I'm just curious with the council members, why is it different now that there's power in this document, as opposed to last year where, you know, you know, the state legislator won't read this, they don't care.
I think it gives some guidance to our lobbyists.
Yeah, so the, the change is that now we have a vessel in which we can
And the power of the document, I would say, is when we go forward, we know that we're in line with what you're thinking, so it's not just direction to them, this is where we're walking with the values from your direction. So ideally, we'll be able to point to this document and look to our lobbyists, but okay, yeah, it really did help us collect our thoughts, and quite honestly, Lisa and I can Nora will Nora will test whatever, you know, this document, can we just shrink it down, but the thought process that went into it, we agreed to keep it.
Thank you.
So page four. Where we start with the holds our, our main themes, just wanted to check, you see the enhancing public safety there highlighted, and we can un-highlight it, but that was the, that was the ad, because if you'll remember, when we went looking for a lobbyist, we originally started on the path that we would primarily focus on law enforcement, but based upon the services they're able to provide, we're gonna run the whole gamut with them, but.
The highlighted bit, my only turn here is with the phrase with common sense, because that is so subjective. That, like, so many people interpret that differently. For instance, some people think gun regulations are so common sense, because obviously, whereas other people think only bad guys have guns, and that's common. Whereas other people think only bad guys have guns and that's common sense. So I think we need to like narrow this down. If it's like comport with improving sub, uh, keeping crime low, improving public safety with property and personal crime or. However, that is in line with the constitution. I think that just gives us a little bit more, um, protection. Because I'm telling you the common sense, it means something different every, yeah, it's no longer common and it.
How about we just, how about we just create after accountable?
Okay, I'm fine with that too.
Picks out and ways to comport with common sense in the constitution.
Yeah.
Don't want some constitutionality.
That's, that's inherent.
Yeah, engaging criminal, keep engaging criminal accountable and in the interest of the public safety or something like that.
Thank you. So as she is, you are familiar with our work systems. It's broken down by work systems, so we can jump to page eight. I would just say, does anybody have any changes or ads or misses related to. Creating economic development.
But here with construction defect laws, we have, um, excessive in here. So safeguards against excessive construction, which is also another subjective term. Of what is excessive for construction defect laws? I'm sorry, um, page nine at the bottom. Construction defect laws. So you're about to support safeguards against excessive construction defect laws. And to Lauren's point, similarly, it's subjective. Right? So what are we determining as excessive versus reasonable construction defect laws?
Against maybe owners. So I think that's another subject for.
And I'm gonna say that there is going to be some subjective in here that we'll discuss as the legislation comes through. Cause I think you're gonna find a lot of subjective one.
Well, it's just that, that first bullet point in your argument is saying that the city is seeing not, um, for sale multifamily housing due to current levels. There's a myriad of variables. I don't. Is it, is it, our data is showing that the primary reason that there's not sales of multifamily housing is because of construction defect laws? It is?
That's what we've, that's what the building community has told us for several years. And we've been.
Yeah.
Metro mayor has been on this one for a long time.
And I know, didn't they pass a few years ago an update, but it didn't go far enough for, I'm trying to recall.
It was kind of reform in name only. It was.
Okay.
It, it didn't actually change anything.
Okay.
It was just an attempt to get the builders to get comfortable.
Well, that was the. Flat notes.
Okay.
Anything else in C E?
And I don't know where it would, where it would be that, you know, with the, with the potential of proposed legislation on zoning. Are we, are we clear in here from a zoning perspective?
You know, I think that from a, not just a, um, a zoning perspective, I think it's a local control issue.
Yeah, yeah.
So we, from a local control, we're a home rule city, so we don't want to help about anything like that. No, I don't think that we've called out zoning specifically in this, but we've called out local control.
I agree.
Do you have a mention in the, towards the bottom of page nine about restrictions on single-family housing? Under the comprehensive plans.
Do we think it's possible they would do a statewide growth limitation? That seems insane.
I have not heard that.
Cause it's, it's in here. And I know cities like Boulder and Golden have those, which in turn has of course exacerbated the. And it just makes things worse.
Um, page twelve, housing trust fund, the city supports it for a statewide housing trust fund. Just wondering if we're good with the city housing trust fund?
If we have local control, we do that anyway. I think we need to get them to. Give us a blessing.
Okay. I'm just saying if the city seems supportive of a housing trust fund. At the state level, I'm curious if we're taking that same.
I guess that'll be a discussion we'll have internally as it pertains to us without involving the legislature.
Just dropping that.
As you usually do.
As long as we got that. Ready to go to infrastructure? Okay, anything on there?
Where's the whole discussion with Excel on, um, streetlights? And cause that came up last year in terms of their price, the whole pricing issue for, right?
I recall that. So there was some discussion last year and I can't remember the exact details, although Brad from my office was involved. Um, there was some move to. I can't remember if I had to do the one percent fund. Some, it was a move to restrict something that Excel was doing. And so Excel was trying to advance the idea that they're already great partners with all the cities. And so we don't, the state legislature doesn't need to get involved.
Part of that was transparency on the pricing.
Yes, yeah.
So, you know, so, you know, when they do something and come up with a price, we were just supposed to say, okay. We trust you and we believe it.
Right, without them giving us details.
Right. And, and Excel's position was, well, now you're getting into our proprietary, you know, rights. And so. You might see that resurface this year.
And Jack, well, they, they said anything about that in our.
We continue to talk about this regularly. We have calls with Excel leadership and our city manager's office to keep this topic on. Um, we're collaborating on providing more information, but it's still not detailed enough to meet our franchise requirements. For us, we do hopefully have franchise agreement requirements that do require that creative transparency. Not that they're abiding by those.
Right, exactly.
But we have the ability to enforce that independently. But it would be nice to have state laws that, that reinforce that.
There was some, uh, I think Greenwood Village was pushing that hard. And maybe a couple of the cities down there were really pushing that.
And I can get you more details on what was discussed before. That way if it comes up.
Page eighteen, um organizational service effectiveness. You see, starting off on page eighteen is the House Bill twenty-one.
Before you get there, RTD. Is there going to be an effort to change the makeup of the RTD board? I mean, our, our own districts are perfect. We couldn't get somebody on the ballot.
Right in.
Yeah, just a write-in county.
And yours wasn't the only.
I know.
Yeah.
I know. And the governor has indicated he'd like to do something different.
Yeah. I haven't heard anything about that since, you know, with regards to the most recent election. Um, we heard so much about RTV before the, right before the pandemic.
Right.
Um, and then not a lot has, has come up since then.
They're not universally loved by. There's not a love fest going on.
Well, I have a comment for page twenty-two. For the paid family leave. I'm, I'm struggling with the language mirroring FMLA. And in the first sentence, comments on FMLA provides up to twelve weeks unpaid. Family medical leave. I feel like that ship has sailed. The voters of the state have approved. We get paid. A medical leave. And I understand in our conversations, when we declined as a city. Uh, to participate in the program, we said we were going to find something comparable. So this implies that we want to go back to unpaid. As I read it, and I don't think it's, I just want us to be really careful about how that's worded.
And I can also, I mean, I can defer to Gabrielle on this one, but I think what we're saying in that first sentence is that. We are required by federal law to provide that twelve weeks of leave unpaid. However, that doesn't mean that we won't take steps forward to, um, as, as we have indicated in there, to remain competitive with paid leave. So that likely is going to mean now, especially with the implementation of family. In order to remain competitive as an employer, we're going to have to find ways to compensate people, um, for leave. That previously we were only required to provide unpaid.
So again, I, I just don't like the word mirroring FMLA then, because that implies, do you see what I'm saying?
Well, FMLA and family are two different things.
Absolutely. I, I know that, yeah. And I think we've got to, we've got to make that distinction clearer.
We will change some wording and.
Okay, thank you.
Definitely revise that clearly. Align with what we're doing.
For the, um, page twenty-one, Senate Bill twenty-one dash one seventy-six, what was that provision that was defeated? The, um, bottom page twenty-one, city opposes any mandates that create unreasonable expectations and municipal liabilities. Such as provisions in the defeated Senate Bill twenty-one.
I think that was the, was that the power act?
I don't remember.
I think, I think it was a piece of legislation that, um, was in negotiation with the business lobby, the business community. That would have, um, disallowed a lot of discrimination and harassment in the workplace. Um, but it did, which.
Right.
But I, it, from a lot of folks' perspective, including some folks in the business committee, community, community, excuse me. Um, and local governments, they thought it went too far and it would open up, uh, liability.
Protecting opportunities and workers' rights.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that was ultimately the standard for the end of twenty-one session. Okay, thank you.
Page twenty-three, save community.
Yes, Ed, do you have anything on this? Richie Brady?
I don't know, nothing in particular. I've looked at these where I'm in, uh, discussions with C A C P. There will be legislative meetings on those. In addition to Ed and Jennifer. So. Um, I mean, there are some concerns coming up. Particularly, you know, where the legislator, legislators are dictating tactics and how that might work. That would be a concern. Uh, any unfunded mandates is obviously a concern, as that's gonna impact us.
Should we add something about tactics in here?
In addition to the, uh, no-knock warrant, I'd heard that there was some discussion about introducing a bill. That would be, uh, in response to the Uvalde shooting, you know, requiring officers to go in. And I'm certainly not condoning what happened there. I don't know all the details, but I just think it becomes very difficult when legislators try to determine the tactics. I'm highly confident in the tactics that we use here. Uh, for instance, uh, no-knock warrants, it's not what you see in the movies. I can't tell you the last time that we did something like that. Typically, it's a surround and call out. But there may be times where we need to breach the front door and order people out. That would be considered a no-knock. But we don't go rushing in like you see in movies. And I think there's misunderstanding on that. So as much as we can educate our lobbyists. Uh, we'll be advocating for, um, things that don't, don't determine how we operate.
The C M L thing, they, we're talking about the no-knock warrant stuff, maybe the even, even extended that knock and announce warrants. And even putting a timeframe between the time you announce and then the time you can knock the door down. Make sure the bad guys know exactly when that door is opening, um, rather than have guessing. So that, that kind of stuff is.
It's got to be remembered too, the judges sign up on these warrants, you know, we just don't go do this at will. And they're only used in the most extreme cases. But again, our tactics are not like they used to be. We don't kick and run in. That's dangerous for us. We don't, we don't risk our lives to protect, uh, to save evidence. Most of our tactics are really going around the house and ordering people out. But there may be a time where we would need to breach a door and hold, and, and I don't want this legislation to stop us from doing the right.
Or giving the bad guys clues into how you're gonna operate.
That's true.
See, I like the idea. We surround, if they pass that, we surround the whole house. That way wherever they run out of, when we knock on the door, we'll just catch them there.
You're hired.
Thank you, Officer Simpson.
By neighborhoods.
We've got a number of things where we're supporting, and I think it would be good to, you know, go back to the earlier discussion, that we're not just sure to kill things to, to. We can advocate for some things, try to get some wins in that. Pretty common sense kind of things that. By anybody's definition of common sense, that, you know, we can support. Indicate that to the extent that any of our folks want to, you know, have a bill on these topics or support a bill on those topics, that then we're right there with them.
You know, for sustainability, I often hear us talking about local control, and this is saying that we're hoping that the state is taking a leading role. Is there a reason for the deviation from that, that mantra, so to speak?
I think it's favorable regulatory environment is the operating space there. Again, it goes back to the definition of.
So I would ask, is, is, as we walk through this, we believe these are the priorities, but in order to, um, support our lobbyists, if there are things that. Council feels strongly are at the top of the list. And what I have heard from you, and I believe is. Law enforcement is at the top of the list, issues that are negatively impacting our, um, officers and our ability to do our jobs. We, we want to take on that bite. Cause I would like to hear from you. Is there anything else at the top of the list that?
I mean, I, I'm really not comfortable with increased legislation for, you know, right to rest as it would obtain. Like our hands are already very tied in terms of what we can and cannot do. And I think a better response is to provide us more resources to be able to get people into better environments. Then just tell us, well, no, you have to leave them in the same bad situation. You just can't get rid of them now. Like, that's making the situation worse, not better. We need to make it better.
The housing component, but homeless.
Yeah, yeah, in terms of homelessness, as well as, um, keeping people out of homelessness, giving them alternatives. It's a spectrum, of course. And then also the mental health resources, the beds, that, that, those, I know the, that's a priority for pollists, but it needs to be. An emphatic one, because they can't tell us, we can't do something to help somebody when there's nowhere giving them help. Cause as Ed knows, we take somebody in, they're, they're out in twenty-four, forty-eight hours. That's not help.
I think the priority for us needs to be preserving our local authorities. So whether it's forced adoption of building codes or fire codes. Or, uh, taking away our taxing authority. That was one of those last year. Um, certainly what we've talked about with our development, our zoning and development, our land use authority. But all those things, the protecting our authority, in addition to the police stuff's gotta be one of the top priorities that. At every turn, regardless of what the good idea behind the proposal is, it needs to protect our authority.
I would agree with that. I mean, whatever the needs for Denver maybe are, the needs for, you know, rural Colorado are going to be extremely different. Let alone us in between those two poles, so.
Oh, have you changed my telephone number? Because that phone number rolls over to Free Garden Danborn, and I'm sure they don't want all the phone calls from. The legislature.
Just same on mine. That's my personal cell. We can change it.
Yeah, and my old phone number is old.
Now we're all checking our phone number.
Well done.
And we did have Senator-elect Cutter in here. I remember that. Thank you for the reminder.
We just email him via phone, email a grid or shout him out, just so we can get it right. Which one you want on there?
Uh, yeah, do my, uh, the voice, like maybe the one that's on my business cards.
So, do you feel like you have what you need?
Yes, given that there are no bills introduced yet. This was very helpful, just to get a, a sense of the city and the, the priorities here. Um, and then, as I told your city manager, she knows this is not an eight to five job. Um, and then as I told your city manager, she knows this is not an eight to five job and she can call me anytime and Jennifer as well. And as things come up. So during the session is frankly, when we do, we'll, we'll 90% of our work. So.
I catch you.
Very good. Well, we're thrilled to have you on board. Um, it's something we haven't done in the past, but, um, I know other cities do and it's going to just be important for us as a, you know, one of the major cities in the state to have good representation down there. So we're thrilled to have you.
We're all in this together. Okay.
All right. Good luck down there.
Thank you.
Don't envy your job.
There's some good people too, and we have a lot of fun.
Yeah. You have some of the best legislators.
Yes.
I took a while. Sorry. And we want to break. Oh, yeah.
I'm just declaring news. Okay, move. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're out of our study session.